February two thousand and twenty five. And begin as this customer request was presented to the board. I believe it's required in that decision contract. And you do know what it stands for. One nation, one people. And there is local community just for. Thank you. At this time, I will open the page to public comment. If any member is a public present, I give you the rest of board. Your opportunity to do so. Hearing that, I will close the public comment section and move ahead into a public hearing. This is a public hearing to discuss the establishment of the Kensington Cemetery Expediator Trust Fund with provisions of RSA thirty one of seventeen dash A. And we do have the chair of the Cemetery Expediators here with us. There are any consequence. So if there are questions or comments on that topic, they are. This is a public hearing for that.
That's why they have to do it because they have to have a public hearing within thirty days of the vote.
Okay. So if this public hearing allows it, if the town votes to accept it, then we can establish a discussion of public. So if there are no comments, important questions, we'll then close the public hearing. It does state in the agenda that if a second hearing is necessary, that would be if we needed more time or if there were material changes, but they're saying that I hope it doesn't necessarily. Great. We'll move ahead then into reports from department, beginning with the police department.
This week, the beginning of my down people time officer for a while. One is for about six months, the other one is a couple of three weeks. And the week after next, we're down a full time officer, so down three guys at one point. So it's a reason movement with the shifts probably a little less covered tonight. But usually this period was pretty much. So be busy a couple of weeks with that. The only other thing is that significant increase in in DWI since the first few years. So don't know what it is, almost it's sort of wrong. That's picture we did so many days before life. So also we more beautiful pictures of the DWI. So I'm over this.
Comments and questions? Thank you, Chief. We'll go ahead then to the fire department, the chief of fire.
You know, I think I got is the Lucas, which is the CPR machine is in. And we do in service training. For that, pretty much.
Okay, comments and questions for.
Are you barred when that? Definitely even we own it legally.
What do you think? Did you carry that on the influence?
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief, for watching. We have received a report from emergency manager.
Depending on the whether the pieces for the radio installed for the building portion coded are hidden. He's almost finally able to get the air after him on search and out to Kansas somewhere else to get those parts that they're in. He's hoping to have that part installed this week, depending on whether. So that should happen and then it's up to the state radio guy to come and put the radio in itself.
So you know, this is about twenty five years you're making.
Yeah.
Trying to get back while hopefully.
What do you think?
Yeah.
Hopefully we do. Yes. The building.
Yes. Not kidding.
Thank you. Move that to road minute, Mr. Charles.
And it was another one. Winter is here. Pretty pretty anxious in the weather department. Past two weeks, we've experienced this storm nearly every three days, taking the crew over sixty five hours and ninety five tons of salt to mitigate, costing over forty thousand dollars in equipment demand hour and sixty five hundred dollars in de-icing material. Just a food for thought or a friendly reminder. As I've noticed, the snow piles pile up in the banks, get taller. Some residents have begun to push their snow across the town's right away, including like cleaning the cars off on the street. Just a friendly reminder of the snow obstruction ordinance. And also a few mailboxes inadvertently gotten wiped out by the snow. Snow off the bottom. And just a reminder too of the damage, you know, block policy we have here. That's Ed from the room.
Yeah, first thanks for all the work, obviously. And hopefully, you know, the horse is over, but we know there's probably a troop. State pharmacy. I do appreciate you bringing forward the damaged mailbox ordinance. Or policy, I should say, non-ruins. Because we had that communications from a resident or two who had had complaints from damages to their mailboxes. And what we probably want to do, unless this board must deviate from that policy, is share with them this policy, so they know what the town's policy is relative to the situation. And that this board is adhering to that policy unless there is a requirement.
Yeah, I was able to fix mine, so I'm not putting it clean, but I'm watching out for the next time.
Well, the question for the policy does state that anything that's in the right way. If it's damaged, it doesn't qualify for any replacement. It's if they are off of the right way and are damaged, then the resident can.
Well, mine was right at the edge of the road.
So it's in the town where it is.
I know.
Which makes it not a qualifying clause. Well, I don't know where you were still the problems like that. If they're long, if they're right on, like mine is right on. If it disappears, I'm just that's true the short stroke. It's when they're back off of the right way and they get hit and there isn't proper security of applying and determining.
That's going to get on wrong because then the the mail delivery people complaining that post officer replaced office on the mailbox not in proper place.
Yeah, I understand that. Now we're talking about earlier that if it's not right on the right way and it's back, now you've got to dig out so the mail carrier doesn't have to, you know, leaving the nasty gram and they said they got your box. But.
Well, the whole thing is they they reach it from truck.
Right.
So if they can't reach it from the truck, then you're a bad person.
That's what I do about nasty gram. I do think that the contractors considering events that we've had. A lot of work they've had is new, they've done a fine job. And this is just sometimes it's it's part of what happens looking at this.
Well, I was swearing when I was putting mine back up.
Was that?
I was swearing you. And I had him right before you mind backups.
So if there's no if there's no desire to deviate from or make alterations to this policy, I don't hear it at this point. I would recommend maybe Kathy that if you and Matt respond to this claim with the policy. And then I'm going there.
I was slap mine down so he gets the lowest messages.
Of course. And like that, we'll take comments before.
Sir. Finally for for Matt. It's my belief that the at least one of the plows may be incapable of clearing underneath the mailboxes. This is from firsthand experience. Plow doesn't. I don't think the plow will fit underneath, so any of the mailboxes, it's sort of sticking out into the street. A lot of plows will sweep. And they'll, as long as they don't hit the post, they're going to go under the mailboxes. At least one of the plows that we're using right now is not capable of going underneath. So they're trying to clear the street, they come to a mailbox and then they have to barely push the end of the mailboxes. And even though you just said that the snow is hitting and wiping out, it's actually the plow. And plow is and whoever's driving, not faulting anybody because they hit the end of the mailbox and all they have to do is dig it by a half of an inch and the mailbox is toast. And so I'd ask you, is anything you could do to look into, find out if what I'm saying is true, that the plow will no longer go underneath the mailbox, it's outrick to the street? And if that's the case, that's contributing substantially to damage. On my screen, we've had several mailboxes damaged in previous years in having that here.
I might wait to maybe go and check in and see if you can find out where that's planning to be going. Want to figure out, you know, where those assignments are and just kind of set it out. See if there are any, you know, to plan or. Thank you. Any other comments relative to the road department? Thank you. I do see that our building inspector issue was made.
Yeah, Paul, come later. I was basically a small sack in the year. It was there was. Further offerings coming in, but nothing to say to them like that. Other than that, you know, the frac is finally supporting and working with Jeff. I'm trying to integrate. Don't worry, we may absolutely broken old. I have been in the storm, inspection didn't run out. And that's right now, we're really good on that. We have, hopefully, in their future. Weekend is emotional, so we try to go.
Other than that. Comments or questions for police inspector over the way?
They really weren't. What's going on with that? Is that not the country book? Probably that. I think it's going to be here. Is that buying for other than moving that to them?
It improved. But as far as the sale, it is what the first.
I think Bruce said the twenty eight was the last day. Last day was the.
Oh, okay.
And also the Scott, you know, states that's trying, he's working on that's playing what you agree. Trying to get the change in use. The old restaurant. One on seven, so that's that's moving forward.
Thank you. They changed to the clean use for.
He wants to do a.
Your answer.
Yeah.
Oh, there he's going to the CBA for.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did. That's all.
Yeah, that was a perfect.
That's the that's the one on one on seven.
Yes.
Seeing no other department heads, committees, I'm going to move ahead into new business. We have a request for support of Comcast. This is an old, actually old business, technically, yeah, if you've seen it before. This was the language that really properly represent our relationship with Comcast relative to your ownership of populations. And generously, we've worded some of that language, so it's a little better. Hope there must be able to. Get it together. Don't understand. I was happy with the new language. It basically says, you know. Helps out them certain populations if you ever have here or looking down the rear. You know, I mean, where the old ones have said that before, you know, we have these identified population or something that we don't do enough. So so basically, if there's nothing, then we have to be where. Not really, man. I think we have to sign. Really what Comcast is doing is trying to collect this menu, this form, let it do this more accessible, so when I go to the go to Congress, I'm like, okay, everything's awesome.
Yeah.
So. Show me this. And I think it's probably okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Should there be anything?
Yeah, we want to. There it is. Basically, it's just that the water is flowing. Shouldn't be in there. It's like this, they're demonstrating, so yeah. Be supportive, then continuing to do this.
Wow, you're wonderful.
Yeah. So is that something that I don't know if you have it for us to sign?
I haven't been to go grab.
That's where you had to go here with that language and say yes. It was earlier click before, but this is more accurate. And so I can't help but notice the chair to energy committee came in. So was there anything specific that we need to speak to, I don't know, let people know back that the department has a review report. Right, you guys, the chair of the energy committee.
Yes, we have a couple of different things. First one is the Soul Smart program that we talked about before, which is a program that is being offered for free to community in Hampshire membership towns, which we are one of. It is a program that will certify us members of the energy committee to be to do smart zoning for so so solar zoning for the town. So the town internally doesn't have any zoning. The idea is that they teach us what that means, how we can use it to benefit the growth of tolerating having here. It's not necessarily to impose new rules and regulations, but it's more so that if a business or example comes that can event, we'll implement from the local area. Right now, we don't have anything to say yes or no. We just started about to start from scratch. The idea with this type of permitting is that there will be rules in place that we can follow to move the the town and power prices.
And any changes to zoning generally will start with planning board.
Yeah.
So I would recommend that we connect with the planning board to discuss that.
Right, so first we needed your to apply to the program. And the other one was we needed to know who's on the planning board, do you guys think we should reach out to? Because they recommend we have like energy meeting one person from the planning.
The reason that they recommend that is any changes to zoning ordinance that end up on the warrant begin with planning board. So I would say, even before this board authorizes anything, I would begin by discussion with the planning board to see if they're on board. You don't need to see if they're going to partner. Do you know what I mean? As far as sequencing goes, I don't want I don't want this board to be weighing in on on zoning issues before the planning board has had the opportunity to.
Yeah, it just so this is not, it wouldn't do anything. This is just certification for the energy meeting members.
Right, I I understand, but it sounds to me like what we're talking about is that certification is a precursor to develop changes to the zoning ordinances with the planning board.
Yeah.
So before we certify anybody in the first steps in that process, it makes sense, I think, to make sure that the planning board and the energy committee have have the opportunity to make, you already need to kind of clear the decks on.
All right. Could we leave them in the media, then the red obviously.
We shouldn't either. We don't need to.
No, it's not available.
Next.
The zoning is
Well, do that.
This planning that they're for. So I would recommend, if you maybe one of them.
Well, what I think you want to do is just reach out. It's a Justin.
Planning is the chair of the planning board. And then he wants to do it and it's available. Because I think what you're going to see is if everything is fine there, then you come here and we start them. What's the first step in the process? Certification, whatever, it's a, you know, a gap in language for board articles, that's what we're making. That's probably the problem.
Okay, so we're going to do that. It is timing because the Sawyer Foundation, what do they call the the roof that managed Sawyer?
Sawyer, first and first trust.
Okay, they moved that to us because they are looking at installing solar on their roofs on the on Sawyer Park. We will be involved and help them through the process. They have a fantastic location because both of the roofs that they have available, the kind of the hurdle, the picnic area and the concession stand both have south facing roof, metal. So that means that we just plant on without doing anything out of the way to the building. The service, they have to be based power, it's more than enough side or the transformer. So it's a it is an ideal location that's going to reduce their cost significantly. We'll advise on the full project and then we'll, you know, come here at some point, I imagine.
Well, actually, the Sawyer Park Trust has its own governance operation, which is a joint. There are elected members from the town, there are members appointed from the most family trust. I mean, there's a whole and I don't. Government structure to that, so that that would be really independent of this board and would all be handled by the trust and the contract agreement and.
All right.
So I think it's a good use of the energy committee to be a resource to them like this.
Yeah.
But it's almost like if you're going in with the library or if you're going with the school, there's a separate quasi elected or elected plus authorization to to work.
Authorization and that's exactly to meet their own budget. Do they control the funding and that?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
They have, they get a payment, annual payment from the town.
Yeah.
That's that's an agreement that exists.
Right.
And then they have, you know, the the trust manages that collectively with their.
That is no good news. That also no progress. And they still count as a municipal group and management. They're a nonprofit, so.
They're a quasi municipal. They've got their own. Yeah.
They're a big, they're nonprofits and that. So that means, yes, that's going to make the process easy. We can still, I think the political landscape can settle us a little bit. They can probably take advantage of a lot of the grants that we have been looking at. And then we're not going to have to get town a little difficult, so it should be able to.
Yeah. Do you have to take work?
Uh, it's not, we're not going to answer like more article data segment four with an investment.
But you tell us.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, so we will be, yeah, so we're going to be talking to them and advising. They're not really suggesting the company that we're going with here. I mean, of course, lots of different things, but they did a good job. So we'd likely recommend them. The cost is really good. They're looking at a fairly low return on investment if they move forward, so.
Honestly, I think it's probably one of the good benefits of the energy committee is any entity within town, frankly, whether it was private entity or public entity that wanted to avail themselves guidance on that. I think that that's a good use of the energy committee's absolute time.
Great to hear.
So.
Fantastic, so.
Just like I would say for residents, you're going to assist the resident.
Yeah.
Maybe not, you know, but you might be able to point in the direction, answer some questions.
Yeah, yeah, sure to recommend the companies which we got to.
Right.
Advice on everything else, try your feasibility, technology, that we're definitely. Okay, but and then the last thing was there, it was something related to something you said in Catholic, actually. So we have been, the political legislative body has been very busy lately, the last couple of weeks. Lots of bills coming to New York. They often tend to reach out to a lot of the energy committee members, asking individuals to not ask the town, of course, to give testimonial, like some of us have gone to speakers to speak against or in favor of certain bills. But I was wondering if at any point we should or should not submit, I said, well, you, for example, have asked a town energy committee. Is that something we are supposed to do, cannot do?
I would say right now I wouldn't. Only because acting in an official capacity, you're an advisory body.
Okay, just supposed to be, yeah.
Okay, so that would be making partisan or political statements
Yeah.
as representatives of the town that we may have not had the opportunity to weigh in. So I would say it's individuals. You can do whatever you want. As long as it's clear that you're acting individually, you can do whatever. If I were to go and testify, or if I were to go and, you know, we could go and say, hey, I'm a member of the board. I'm not speaking for the board, I'm speaking as a member.
Okay.
You can certainly do that, but as far as in an official capacity, speaking on behalf of the town, which is what that would be, that way danger wise.
Okay, yeah, the concept for this, I know, is there, and it's my last thought, actually, community power. So community power, there have been. There was a bill introduced last year that has that is now destabilizing the energy markets a little bit. The bill made it a requirement of utility companies to source their default supply from the spot. What that means, sorry, yeah, you you heard of the bill.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say this.
Yeah.
If if there is something that you think as a town we should weigh in, which is, is community power a good revenge?
Yes, yeah.
Okay? And if towns are starting to weigh in on that.
Yeah.
That's that's a little bit different where you would come to us.
Yes.
We would determine whether or not as a board we wanted to have a board action that was an official comment on something like that. Because I suspect we're going to see towns maybe ask to do that sort of thing.
Right, just thinking that's my.
Like this, like this letter we just did for Comcast and.
This is great.
I mean, you know, I mean, that's really, but we want to make sure we do that through this transparent and official process that we have.
Okay, so just in case we have another chance, the bill is being heard tomorrow, so they're not going to say. But if it progresses, which would be a good thing, so this is a bill that would.
Being heard in committee?
Sorry?
Is it being heard in the committee or?
Yeah, the science, technology.
So if it advances to the full floor.
Yeah.
And there is a movement by community power in Hampshire and other towns, let us know if there's a a wagon to get on it, right? We can discuss it.
Yeah.
But I think that's the place that we would probably
Okay.
potentially get on. I can't speak for anyone.
Okay, fantastic. It's a little letting us know if something develops. And so, yeah, that is the final update committee. So community power, I don't know if you guys have heard of it, but there was some issues that happened. Nothing drastic for us, but basically that law that I'm talking about needed so that mental is offering now the default rate is a couple of half of a cent cheaper than community power. We're talking two dollars one per on average for a resident, which is still lower. Right, so any resident can opt out if they want to. But that's not the problem. The problem is that it's an artificially lower rate that.
That they can recoup, right?
They can recoup through every customer, not just the ones that are actually on the default service. That's why there's so much like interest in fighting in favor of the bill as far off. Because it would, it's going to destabilize them regardless, right? So everyone is going to lose the next six months. Or not, hopefully not, very quickly not, but already they have to pay ridiculous amounts of money for spot and they're in this cold snap, so it's it's going to be an issue. Regardless, yes, the bill is making the default service slightly cheaper, so it's going to be eighty point six cents, I want to say, for the default and community powers is at nine cents. I don't know the exact numbers. We we should load it up. And it's between March and July, so it's a short period.
I think what you've done already, which is to notify people, someone what's going on, is really the extent of what you could do as a committee or even as a town right now is to inform people and then just kind of, people are going to have to make decisions as they go, as as the market shakes out. I mean, if this is an attempt by the utilities to kind of head off the the community power movement and that's what you're at, I don't think any of us know where all this ends.
Yeah.
So I think just keeping people in, you know, as you want them and as you want them to.
Yeah, in in worst case, it's still cheaper electricity. So it's a win win sort of bracket, right? We're going to stay on top of it. If the next period we see that community power is starting to trend in a really bad direction, we can pull people out. That's exactly what we'll get that fail safe in for, so we're not worried. We're just a little sad that the utilities are playing these games.
Well, I think it's like anything else, anything tiny or something like new that comes to the the real world, there's going to be ups and downs on both sides.
Yeah.
And it will shake out because the consumer will eventually seize their fluff and go with what is going to work best for them. And if these companies keep focusing on, but especially consumer, they'll be able to be successful. But if they start mucking it up, consumer will find a way to get rid of.
Yeah.
So.
So we'll see. We'll see now, in a couple of months.
Thank you for the update.
Yes, I think that was in, we were fighting again, definitely one bill that just had the inexpedience legislative. It was a, a law that was going to ban all electric vehicles from parking in parking directions, public and private. That was what we went personally. Unanimous projection, so it was.
One of that because of fears of fire?
Yeah, fears of fire and weight, but it wasn't from, it didn't have any data to base it on. There have been zero EV fires in parking garages in Hampshire ever, and there's been five electric vehicle fires in the last four years causing entire state and all were due to car crashes. So it didn't have much to stem up, but it was still like, you know, I came from a fire chief, the union leader, I think, spoke on it.
Well, I think there's been problems other states.
They have also, no, it wasn't, but it. They have also, no, it it wasn't, but it regardless, it was it was.
The thing the thing you remember is. You know, four hundred members that can introduce as many bills as they want.
Yeah.
And the the bill book is is like this, and there's any number of them that, you know, don't uh rightfully don't get anywhere.
Yeah.
Uh so inexpedient legislation just means, yeah, not gonna happen.
Yeah.
So, um.
I'm just giving you the update, to to hold the speed to concrete this, a lot of finance.
Just just always remember that you're speaking individually, not.
Always somebody, yeah.
That way you can stay clear of any potential.
Right. That's my first thought.
Very good.
Excellent.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh jump back into uh the regular agenda, we have the Alets, they're in development, Tri-State Track, this town, the root is. This is about it. Uh. It's a June twenty one, uh two hundred fifty people. Um. Like like ways, yes, I'm I'm gonna guess, eleven hundred and fifty five, if I have anything to put. Um and so we're working with that for more. No problems, none of those will be the uh signs of anything like that. This is all that we was. So this is a request. Please can link the roads on the twenty first. And I can take the power. There's three. And here. It would just be that they, you know, we did require police detail the last two years, and we probably wouldn't require it again. So it would give that. Putting that subject to the proper work with the public safety uh authority. It would be shut, yeah. Appreciate it, Tanner. Uh he said that he has not yet worked with them, but has worked with them in the past, so I wish to be able to approve the permit pending their um you know, appropriate work together with the police. So I will make a motion to uh approve permit based on campaigns. Okay, for the. Second, motion made in second, you're approved, A list, there'll be all the Tri-State tracks from twenty first of June, uh engine of the speech cheese. Review approval, all of them there.
Alright.
I have a motion to carry, and there's a spot on there for our state officials. Uh we have some unintended, or actually unanticipated, okay. Uh coming in from the historical society, uh they conducted their fundraiser in November, December. Seemed to have been successful, and they um buy our share in twenty five percent of proceeds with us, um to help with the range, building a grounds, it's spent over fifty nine dollars and twenty five cents. Yeah, more. The challenge is that 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 just goes into the general funds because we don't have a specific fund for the range.
Right, they just like inherent month, so the greens need to upkeep this year, they can access this one.
So I guess what I'm saying is this is in addition to the the war level through the funds that are available to the range.
Right.
This would be potentially a problem beyond that, so we might look at is talking to the green, uh are there things that are being scheduled for next year that maybe we can do this year that will take advantage of the the extra dollars that came there?
Yeah.
Uh I think that would be. Alright, yeah, I'm gonna have to, I see this. Um what was it? Um I saw. Over here, this is one of these that is not, not there, it's it's formal, we don't need to sign the maintenance by sentence, okay, so guys, no, that's okay, the the sticker is on the wrong spot. So what we're gonna ask it through is to sign one other form, so that's all I see, and appropriate. Uh then also, I'm trying to get a motion to set up a donated funds for the historical society for the range.
I will make a motion to uh accept the uh information fund of five nine hundred fifty nine dollars twenty five cents from to the town of Edmonton from the uh uh Grange. So, it's the historical society of Canada, no major.
Oh, I said uh I said nine fifty three, not five, that's nine.
Nine nine hundred fifty nine dollars twenty five cents.
I'll second that, that motion made in second, all those favor. Alright, I have such a great. Uh we do have um ground tent excavate, we have a couple.
Two, yeah.
Okay, so we have two intent to excavate, we have the um one is thirteen seventeen two on Amesbury Road, and one is M nine on two on Amesbury Road. I will hand those down for you to look at, and while we're prove all the signature with the. See where the signature. Are they uh ministerial danger? Definitely, definitely, and we sign out on.
And so this is perfect, I believe, too, this is.
And these are two separate.
Yeah, there's okay. From Tom Darren.
I'll make a two seven, pushes to approve the intent to excavate.
So this uh I'll make a motion to uh accept a notice of intent of ex- excavate for Ax map three, lot seventeen, lot one two on Amesbury Road, Route one fifty, total acreage of the lot is sixteen point eight acres.
I'll second, I'll second that, motion hasn't made in second, all those favor.
Alright.
I have a motion to carry. Alright, sign down there.
Second notice of intent of excavations for um um Edmonton, tax map, M nine, lot two, Amesbury Road, total acreage allowed, twenty four point five, twenty four point four nine acres. From Frank the Felge. Who is owner of the land. And heard by the spell.
Second that. The one you hasn't made in second, yeah, all those favor, okay.
Alright.
I have a motion to carry. Sign on the appropriate spot. Um we also do have two uh notice of intent tax personal property on the land of another. Um by which standing of these, the traditional campers, right, where they had um campers or.
Um one is for kids, not for the other for the war, and another, so there's
Oh.
One instance um in town, there the lady eventually non-plied, one person and the trailer is in the line.
Okay, but it usually is.
Oh, yeah.
That is renting man, essentially, so if you pass the property, you have the tax destruction.
Exactly.
Separately.
Right.
Uh so there are two of these, um one is um at two seventeen North Cable Road, and the other is at ninety four Amesbury Road. Um industrial review.
Your request, we uh. Can you do your work on it?
Absolutely.
That's me, do you mind, they would um normally be assigned on behalf of the board.
On the on the.
Agent.
Oh, okay.
So the motion on the notice of intent tax, land of another, there's spot for one signature, so you would uh authorize um the letter, and then further authorize me to sign on behalf of the board.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to uh I get this word, right, to uh just approve the approve the notice, the uh the letter of um assessment, that one notice?
It's a notice of intent to tax.
Notice, okay. And so station. Um. And that's for the the manufactured housing. So what else to need?
Just on on the on the address.
On the address.
Yeah, and then not a suspicion.
Oh, it's it's uh nine agent Amesbury Road, Kansas City, New Hampshire.
And we'll we'll further authorize chair to sign on behalf of the board.
Yeah, and authorize the chair uh of the uh select board to sign for the board.
There's second one.
I'll second.
Motion hasn't made in second, all those favor.
Alright.
I'm uh passed out, nothing, do the other one, okay. Thank you.
They, so the um I will make a motion to um allow the chair of the board's selection to sign in um the. For further to the intent that has a person property on the land of another. Um the map seventeen, lot ten. Or miscellaneous all the owners and campers don't need to know instructions, and and that is situated at two seventeen North Cable Road. And you're within Greenland International Thinkberg, so.
And I'll second. Motion hasn't been made in second, and the motion I do know uh authorizes to sign, so all of us favor.
Alright.
And I, I as well, that motion should carry. Uh further, we have here from fashion on the blue cage company, our engagement letter for the audit. Um standard scope uh performance on their behalf. Um and we gave you for audit, ending this path here. It's also one where I would ask the board to authorize this, we're approved, so give your money, authorize the board chair to sign on behalf. That was your satisfied, we're gonna be ignoring. I didn't say any difference between uh it is eight with others that we talked.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, this this looks fine, I mean.
It's the same.
Scope of work, I think, right? So what do you mean? So voting to approve the engagement letter, we got here, it's authorized the board chair.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to send the letter with the uh chair and board, having the uh if you're, for me, no rights to sign.
I'll second. This is made in second, all those favor.
Alright.
And that's motion to carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, who's my? Again, I have a most.
Just uh Delph and.
But I have those technical regulations going for me, and we have a couple of them, probably going to um.
So there is uh Campbell, this person, there were uh fellow ladies, so.
You're chair.
At the top, yeah, so I think we signed all those, I'm gonna invest in the actual.
Just, it's a bit similar to this, but the G agents, we don't have any of the chat, and you know. And they are our G agents of all.
Yeah, I was pretty much three hundred.
Um I have three minutes of previous meetings to approve. We are scheduled to meet in two weeks' time, on the third of March. Essentially on the ten will be it. Uh and we will post the one the eleven, since we'll at times have a prolonged for the million day. Um. And the other.
I have um I'm still finishing this, so I might be taking vacation on the uh the eleventh.
Ohio, you finish your summer.
Well, it's open here, so we have the uh week after, so depending on when we're here, if we're going down, it's finished.
I'm just kidding.
It's ready.
I I knew you were. So we can now, it was a kind of exciting. Uh. I do not, Kathy, have on here um the language. Oh, I do, I know I don't, I don't really understand, I'm saying, I'm thinking that, it would be that, it would be. And if you also don't know before us, before we enter into non-public for purposes of, I guess, personal legal or for to pharmacy. Here, we got the language. Here we go, so we got language for everything. If you're ready, Bush.
Who needs to grab here?
Okay, so we're looking at, I know it's Phil and uh, B, right?
I mean, B.
B.
Um, it's gonna be A, B, and L.
Okay. A, D, and L. B to borrow. Make a motion to movement in non-public under RSA. And you want A three, or you two, to A B and L, A B and L. There a second?
One second.
What you guys have made in second, I would call him a little strong. Alright, Mr. Gusterson.
Alright.
I will guess all of the movements in the whole section. Uh, thank you, appreciate your attendance, if this is the part, we turn on the air. So. Thank you all.